Okay, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Allred.
Here.
Mr. Andjeson. Mr. Fell.
Here.
Ms. Hopkins.
Here.
Ms. McFarland. Rose. Ms. Sims.
Here.
Ms. Yu.
Here.
Great, so it looks like we have a quorum. Any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
We have no minutes to approve from our last meeting. Communications, any communications?
Yes, we received three communications since last time. One of those was in your packet, two came in after the packet. You have printouts of those in front of you. Just to briefly summarize, so these are all pertaining to the continued public hearing for tonight. So the one in your packet was from Michael Osterloo, who is an architect. He had some thoughts about the building height and suggesting that we consider 85 feet. And his reasons are laid out in the email. The second email that came in was from Graham Rail. He's from Rail Development Corporation, who did the Gather project at Lincoln and University. And he was encouraging the Plan Commission to support building heights up to 120 feet. And then the final one was from Annie Adams, who's on our Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. She is in favor of the proposed changes. She said she was excited about the bicycle parking requirements and possibilities of new developments with spaces designed for the market's demands, while welcoming new Urbana residents who bike and walk to our downtown district.
All right, thanks. So that brings us to our continued public hearing. Plan case number 2485-T84. A request by the Urbana zoning administrator to amend Articles 4, 5, 6, and 8 of the Urbana zoning ordinance to rename the B3U General Business University zoning district as the Campus Mixed Use District and update development and parking regulations in the district. So where we left off in our last meeting, we were in discussion. But as we have a member of the public in the audience here this evening, I'm going to suggest that we reopen the public participation portion of the hearing and offer you a chance to address the commission if you'd like.
I like the agenda the way it is.
Okay. Well, if you have...
Are you here to speak about the continued public hearing? Then now would be the time to come up and speak. Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, if you could just sign in and state your name.
Bush, okay, oh, there we go. Okay, I'm Phyllis Williams, I live at 810 West Main. And I think I'm right across the street from the property that's really in question here. Because I feel like this is... Let me back up. I'm also a PACA volunteer, and so I've spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks with the plan development proposed by Royson Brinkmeyer on South State and South Prairie, which is a very innovative plan and is getting a lot of good feedback from the neighborhood. And what I feel like, you're trying to write an ordinance or change what you've got, your regulations, to fit, to market a piece of property for some client, rather than having them come forward with a plan and then if they need variances, ask for them as part of the PUD. I assume that it works that way here, just as it does in Champaign. And of course, that becomes its own zone. It doesn't mean that we've changed the regulations for everybody, just for that PUD. And I think that would be helpful. 85 feet, 120 feet. I can't really remember what the Gather... I think it's over 85, but the big part of Gather. Do you remember, Mr. Garcia?
Well, this is public input. I don't know if I should answer questions, but I'll address that question once you're done.
The crowd will let me.
Okay, it's 75 feet.
It was 75, okay. And that seems big enough, especially when you want to put it right on Lincoln Avenue, which you've just kind of chopped down beautifully to make it more pedestrian-friendly and all of that and kind of calm the traffic a bit. 120 feet, just because it sits on Lincoln, just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. We don't get a lot in return for giving that much up. We're going to have more parking problems in the neighborhood. You know, we're not the state streets. South of Green, they've got permits, and from 3:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., you can't park unless you get permission. Up in our neighborhood, it's Carl, it's the U of I, and it's if you've got a workman coming, you've got to be out there blocking parts of the parking early in the morning, otherwise you're not going to have a place to put that person. So that is the... I know nobody's supposed to drive cars anymore, but that's not the case. And we're, our streets are always full. So we need, we need more than, than you're giving us with, you know, the 20 spaces. I know you showed pictures that indicated, oh, no, these spaces aren't really being used. Well, they are, they are. There's even been a semi truck that's been parking in that vacant lot all summer long. You'll come in for the weekend and then go away on Monday. So then the other thing is, there's no mention of lighting. And there's been a proliferation of these bright lights that are about eight feet off the ground, whether it's the liquor store down on Main or now on Stoughton Street on some of the old Wakeland Apartments, right there in the 900 block, right there at eye level. So it makes the neighborhood look unsafe, and it's hard to have, appreciate any kind of dark sky when what we should have is enclosed bulbs and something that looks a little more person-friendly. So I guess that's it, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you for your comments. Mr. Garcia, did you want to address any of those comments?
I think just the point about the lighting. We have been doing some zoning compliance for, for some of the new lighting over in the neighborhood, that liquor store. I know our planner, Marcus Ritchie, went out, I think, last night to check it out. So we're on top of, on top of that. We do have pretty robust lighting standards in our zoning ordinance. It's just sometimes a matter of enforcing them, and folks don't always know about them, so, thanks.
I also just wanted to clarify, or ask for clarification. This is the revision of a zoning district. There's not any kind of proposal for development of a specific parcel that we're aware of that has anything to do with this?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, it would cover the whole, the whole of the B3U district.
I want to...
Ms. Hopkins.
A word I hate. I want to problematize that description of what we're up to. About the time I got the most recent communications by email, I went on Google Earth and said, okay, what actually is going on? I was trying to look in detail at the neighborhood. I discovered this vacant parcel. And I looked at the image date for the Air Photo, which was a year and a half ago. And I thought, oh, that's the parcel. Then we got a communication signed by a developer indicating that they have a proposal for a 10-story building on that parcel. And then I looked at the record of the meeting in May, and that developer responded to the survey. So I think it's disingenuous of us to pretend that there is no proposal on the table. It may not have been submitted for approval, because it's waiting for us to do this the other way. But I think we're sort of on the backside of what problem we usually have when we have a single proposal come to us and make a zoning change. And we keep reminding ourselves, and we've been through this in reverse recently with the storage unit case, that if we make the change, we're making it for the whole thing. Well, now I think we're saying, you know, if we make the change, we're clearly making it because we've got a specific proposal that we're looking at and we know about. Now, I think we have to be careful how we think about what we're doing. I agree, it applies to the whole area, but that's what I mean by it's the reverse of the problem we usually have.
I think that's possible to think about it that way. But I also want to be careful about characterizing the work that's been done and as something that's responding to a proposal. Because it's my understanding that this has been something that's been on the list of staff to do for some time. Maybe you can shed some light on that.
It has, and we actually came to city council in, it may have been the end of 2022, and then in January of 2023, and talked to council about things that we could prioritize. And this was at the top of that list. It's just taken us a bit of time to actually put it together and then bring it forward.
And it comes out of language from the previous comp plan, correct?
It does, it does. And like I said at last meeting, we've, this has been sort of on planner, the planners' to-do list since I arrived here in 2014. So it's, it's kind of a, you know, it had been on the back burner for a while. And then we, we started it up a little bit last year, and now we're, you know, hit it full bore this year.
So let me clarify. I understand all of that. But the... Where I think a proposal for a motion was about to go a week ago versus what the staff recommendation was and now is again, is explicitly the difference between this proposal and not this proposal. So I guess I was assuming that the major thing we'd be talking about is 75, 85, or 120. And last week, we were saying, well, it doesn't really matter because it's not going to happen. Well, it turns out, not only is there a parcel ready, there was a person wanting to do it on a particular parcel, and we know who that person is.
Okay, well, I think we should officially declare public input closed again and jump into discussion because we are jumping into discussion.
Sorry.
Which is fine, I mean, that's what we're, we're here to do, so...
Well, before, before we do that, I want to be clear. When we went to council back, I think it was January of 2023, we specifically said to them, hey, look at this parcel that is vacant and on the market and will probably be redeveloped. And our current zoning ordinance probably wouldn't allow it to be redeveloped in a very good way. So, you know, we were, we were clear back then that, you know, that kind of helped make it a little higher priority when you've got, you know, 10%, of the district, yeah.
We were admitting, thank you.
Okay.
I like openness, and I think we do it pretty well usually.
I think, I want to say from, from my perspective, because I had a lot of comments on the dimensions and things.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, sorry, and in the, in kind of the, yeah, yeah, in the, in the standards that were proposed. And I had absolutely no idea that there was any project on the table before that meeting, none at all. And, and I basically was the proponent of going to 75 feet, saying the odds of going higher is, is pretty small. And to me, having a developer who wants to do it is, is not a bad thing. And it wasn't, I wouldn't, I don't want my comments last week to be construed that I think, I thought 120 feet was inappropriate. I just thought it was probably not going to happen. To me, it's not really any more appropriate or inappropriate than 75 feet or 85 feet. But, but to kind of clarify my point, I had no idea that there was any project on the table, and I was in support of this pretty unanimously on my side, so...
Well, so, but I, I think, I mean, we don't really have a motion, right? Because before Ms. Yu was about to make a motion, we decided to continue it and get it written. Am I correct? Do we have a motion on the floor or not?
We don't.
No, we don't.
Okay.
We just have the revised, or we have the summary from staff of what we were seeming to be reaching consensus about in terms of proposed changes.
And would you all like me to sort of go through and summarize the changes that I made and then...
I think it might be useful for the public.
Okay, good. So as you will recall, it was just a week ago, the commission asked me to incorporate the suggested changes into the draft text amendment and then to present it here to you tonight. So that's the version that's in front of you in Exhibit H. So those proposed changes were to clarify that buildings must have one main pedestrian entrance facing a street, remove the paragraph that would have required a 12-foot ceiling height on first floors. We updated a paragraph to clarify that front yards must be landscaped only for buildings with first-floor residential uses. Stated, updating a paragraph by stating that parking shall be screened to minimize visibility from the street. Updated a paragraph where we replaced including alleys with excluding alleys when referring to screening of mechanical equipment. Updated the building height in Table 63 to 75 feet rather than the 120 as originally proposed. Updated a paragraph to clarify that parking rates only apply to bedrooms beyond the first 20. So you get the first 20 free, free of parking spaces. And then finally, we rewrote footnote number five in Table 86, which is our bicycle parking table, to clarify how to calculate bicycle parking for non-residential uses in the district. So, yeah, so that's, that's the summary. I, I did have a couple of just recommendations. I went through them in my memo. I don't know if I need to go through right now the reasonings. But one was just to clarify that the pedestrian entrance, the main pedestrian entrance be on the street that the building is addressed off of. And then the second is that we continue to recommend the maximum height of 120 feet. So that concludes my summary report.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm not sure how, I actually changed my day's plan, because I wanted to be sure here, to add this to the discussion. So my awareness was, a lot of the discussion was predicated primarily implicitly, we didn't say this explicitly, on an assumption that the best use of the development was for student housing. And I sat with that because, right, all the data says that student enrollment is going to decline. And that if we want to think about, right, I think in the, in lieu of thinking about the comprehensive plan, and I know I'm not supposed to conflate the two, but the thought of having, and again, I think I said this explicitly, us think about how do we improve development in reflection of where we think the city would be going. And I initially read the first plan as creating a bridge, right? All the prioritizations were around sort of making it neighborhood, like, not student-friendly, but really it felt like it was trying to make it neighborhood-friendly. And I could see that being multi-generational, multi-economic, because we have a housing crisis. I could see a plural, a much more diverse pluralistic landscape. And so I just want us to be clear that we might have a surplus of student housing. And if we're making decisions with that sort of implicit about the best practice for our development, to think about, I mean, and again, I did some envisioning and drove through the area to think about in 10 years, many of the things, so from height to parking to some of the things that I think we've modified, even to what the front entrance looks like. And again, I intentionally went through and thought about what would I want to see? And I just don't want us to make so many corrections based on an idea that it's all student-friendly rather than thinking about looking and envisioning good planned community, not in a way that it's overstructured, and I don't want everything to, like, be the same. But there were some values that I feel like we tossed away that, that might take us further in terms of the kinds of communities that we could be building in Urbana that isn't just so focused on one idea about who we are. Because again, we're going to have a surplus of student housing in a bit. And I, you know, and I just want to make sure that we're being intentional. And I love the idea about thinking, how do we make sure that that plan connects people back to downtown? And that's a different kind of way of envisioning it. So I just wanted to say that explicitly.
Question, are you referring to the first plan or meaning...
So in, in the beginning, right, the original version of this, we started scrapping, you know...
You mean...
Yeah.
Talking about this case?
Yeah, when we started talking about it, it was like one vision that I read from the staff report. And then we started like, well, let's remove that, let's remove this, we don't really need this. And I was like, some of what was in the original plan might take us further than sort of felt like we regressed a little bit to this, what, what we've always done kind of approach.
Okay. I wish one wasn't quite clear.
Can I ask, was there something specific that you think got edited out or changed in some way that you think doesn't produce the desired effect in terms of the, the sort of goal statement for the zoning district?
So I understand the logic, but I thought some of the changing of the space between the, the, the space, the safe space between the sidewalk, the sidewalk and the, the front door, sort of speak, I think some of that aesthetically, and I get the over-maintenance and the, I get that, but I also think that it does make sense if you're thinking about more residential feel. Some of that space makes sense. And so reconceptualizing that, and I think that there's a happy medium. I think some of the concerns about the height, and again, I get that a developer might want something big, but then it changes the feel of where you are, and it also makes it maybe less mixed-income-ish. And then the last thing that I thought in terms of change was, and again, I get where we're trying to go, where we're trying to make sure that people don't drive. But I also think some of the scaling back of parking spaces, and I get the first 20 being a go, but regular people unfortunately might still have to drive, at least, you know, in this city, depending on where they're working and where they're moving. And so, right, so...
Never, no such thing as too much thought. That's great. Ms. Hopkins. Ms. Yu?
Go ahead first.
I was going to maybe set aside one item that maybe easily, or I may open a can of worms, on the notion that the main entrance has to be on the addressed street. I don't actually agree with that. But on the other hand, as in the case of 901 Western, which is the big building to the south, you can change, if you're on a corner lot, you can change which street you're addressed on. I know a neighbor who did it. I'm on a corner lot, you know. I could actually save myself a whole lot of hassle because 107 West and 107 East are four doors, four doors apart, and there's no street that signifies where they break. So, you know, we share each other's mail frequently. But, so, what I basically want to say is, it really doesn't matter because if they really want to put the door somewhere else, they can change the address. So I think we can, you know, you leave it in as far as I'm concerned, but I don't see why we want it anyway. It doesn't make any difference to me. But that is probably not what we really need to talk about.
One thing at a time. Ms. Yu?
I, I do want to go back to what Andrew brought up, about 120, 85, 75. Yes, we went to 75 because of rationality of no one's going to build up that high. But clearly, we probably misjudged. And I do, I think, I do agree with what our planning, our planning staff brought forward of 125 and restate that they would prefer it to be 120 feet. I feel, I find myself to be in support of, of that proposal.
Do you want to try and tackle this one first? This is maybe the one that...
Is there any other, I mean, maybe we, maybe we should find out if there's really any other thing that we need to talk about.
Well, I think what Ms. Sims mentioned, if I understood, one of the, the comments had to do with the change relating to landscaping requirements and the setback, which we, we edited that to only apply to residential buildings. And it sounds like you're thinking, if we had a building that was not residential or mixed-use, that it might be good to have something like that still in place?
That was my thought. I'm not welded to it, so I just wanted to make sure, like, in terms of the discussion, that it was stated explicitly, right? Like, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to vote no on it. But I just think, you know, and, you know, and when we're, you know, people kind of reflecting on these kind of notes, that there was a concern expressed when we look at what it looks like in 10 years, and we're like, oh, that kind of funky looking. How did we get here?
I'm trying to remember the conversation, but I think it wasn't that we wouldn't want, you know, landscaping in non-residential buildings, but that we would want to allow for flexibility for businesses to provide space that was maybe paved for parking, or not parking, but a patio or pergla, right? Whatever the other structure that Bake Lab has. So, Ms. Fell, were you going to add something?
Yeah, I think also to Ms. Sims' point, I think, perhaps I'm wrong, but I think part of her point was, a bunch of our discussion, in a sense, staff's recommendation was to make this district mixed-use to, to, to offer as many diverse options as possible. And some of what we did, based on some of my comments, was essentially legislate out some of the ease of doing that because of things like, there are very few developers who, who do a mixed-use building. They're apartment developers or other kind of developers. So it's hard to get those things together and to, to work well together. So, so perhaps the answer to that, and maybe that's really not the point. I think that's kind of the overarching point, is we legislated out the walkability of the district in a way. And to get that back is not easily done, I don't think, economically. And it's not something we solve at this meeting. But I would, I would encourage staff to perhaps come up with some incentive program to, for a developer that wants to do some kind of mixed-use development, to, to encourage that to happen. If it, I don't, I think if it's not incentivized in some way, it's much... If it, I don't, I think if it's not incentivized in some way, it's much less likely to happen.
Well, to that point, I know that, and I don't have the overlays with me. I know, I know that part of the, part of this district is in our enterprise zone, which, I'm not an expert on this, but if you do a certain percentage of your building is commercial, you get some tax breaks on it. Like, I know The Gather got, got some enterprise zone tax breaks because they put in that space that Bake Lab is in. But I, and, oh, and they have the extended stay hotel. There's a certain, it's a certain percentage of your floor space has to be commercial. So there, we do have one incentive, but we could consider more.
So, I'm confused. What that we legislated out makes mixed use more difficult?
Well, one of, one of staff's recommendations was to, to have a first floor height of 12 feet, and we, we bumped that, we, we got rid of that as a, as a requirement. And I, and I don't feel it should be a requirement, but that's one of the things staff was trying to do to encourage commercial development. I personally don't feel that's necessarily the way to do it, and a way to do it to me is, is more of an economic incentive rather than a physical incentive that we give them.
Okay.
Yeah, well, just to be clear, we haven't regulated anything that wouldn't allow mixed-use development. We've just increased the flexibility. So a developer could still go in and build a building that had a 12-foot ceiling on the first floor, and it was mixed use. We're just leaving it up to the market to decide essentially what makes the most sense for that particular neighborhood.
Well, we're leaving it up to the predicted market, which as Ms. Sims has pointed out, for two reasons of demographics, may not support the prediction. And one of those reasons is a general decline in college-age kids in the U.S. And the other is a likely decline in the percentage of students at the U of I who are direct international students, who are often changing. If you've been around the U of I as long as I have, there was a time when the population, the demographics of the population were much more heavily Illinois students, like 95% were from the state of Illinois. They were not all, or they were not dominantly from the city of Chicago. And they not only did not live in high-density apartments, they had cars, drove cars, and parked their cars all over the city, as we have plenty of heritage, what we might call legacy regulations that are happening. And I fear, and I, Ms. Sims has done a much better job of thinking this through than I have, but I, I have, I had this fear about this phenomenon in terms of how we are characterizing the expectations and imagining what's going to happen. And I, I, so, to sort of put these two things together, I'm not immediately sold on 120 feet. And it was easy last week because we thought it wasn't going to matter. But the, the 120 feet would be the second tower of Hendrick House, which is 10 stories. The bulk tower is six stories. And 901 Western is six stories. And Gather is six stories. The, one of the reasons that Hendrick House, 10-story tower, is not imposing, is that it's very narrow, and actually is beautifully designed from my point of view. It reminds me of Richard's Medical, of Khan's Richard's Medical Center Tower, which I used to look out my dorm room window at. But what my impression of what's being proposed and likely to fit under our regulations would be a 10-story building with the bulk of 901 Western at 10 stories. Now, that is a different impact visually, ground-level intensity impacts, sun angles, and the feeling of walking on a sidewalk. So this comes back to Ms. Sims' other comment, which is, I believe that Gather was actually done as a PUD. Am I correct?
You are not correct, but it was a special use permit.
Okay. So, but I, I knew it had to be one or the other because we reviewed it. So, under what, under what trigger did it become a special use permit?
It's, to do multifamily residential in the B3 general business district requires a special use permit.
But it was also a rezoning, wasn't it?
There was, was there a rezoning?
Multiple zones, parcel.
Yeah, there may have been a bit of rezoning as well.
So, um, but as a special use, we were able to review more discretionary judgments analogous in some respects to a PUD. I mean, I realize there are big differences, but the crucial thing is it gives us discretionary evaluation.
So Lou, can I ask, in your vision, it would be better, it's not like a 10-story building shouldn't be built there. It can, but it would be nice if there's a way for us to provide input of how that is built. Is that where your point goes?
That's, yes, is the simple version, but there might also be additional reg, regulations or expectations before the discretion started. Yes, I think that's something we should try to think about, but we may want to do more than that. So, but, but let's assume it's, it's that for the moment, and that we could make something a special use in, what is it, C, CMU?
Yes.
Gotta get down these three-letter acronyms. And, and I don't, I don't, I've been thinking for the last two days of some way to do this, and I'm, I'm finally getting there, a little late, but, so, I'm concerned about multiple things if we have 120. I'm not too concerned about if it's 75 or 85, because I think there's some adjustments we might want, might want to make more precise on the setback issues, even in that case. But if we're gonna go to 120, then I think we need to think about some other things. I don't, I am not comfortable with full-bulk 10-story buildings on Lincoln Avenue, at Main and Lincoln in particular, it turns out. If they were on University, it would bother me less. If they were on Harvey, it would bother me less. But on Lincoln, I think it's a problem. Now, the, the things I've thought through the last few days, which I was able to reject pretty quickly, is a New York City zoning style step back. And I thought, no, that, I mean, that gets at the problem, but that doesn't work, we've tried that. FAR, and I thought, well, you know, that would get at it, but we know that has problems, that doesn't work very well either. So discretion was a third thing, but I couldn't figure out a way to do it. So I guess I have a question, is there a way we could do it with special use? I, I, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, we're writing the rules, I think we could, I mean, the, the most basic thing that I could think of is you say, building height is a max of 85 by right. If you want to do something up to some other height, you have to get a special use permit.
Can you think about that? I, I wish I'd thought of the idea more than 10 minutes ago, because I would have liked to have slept on it. But so far, I kind of like the idea.
I think if we were to do something like that, we would need to provide some guidance, like what are we looking for?
Right.
To get you to 120 feet.
What are the criteria?
There needs to be something in the purpose statement that's, provides some more clarity orally, or at some point in the ordinance that provides some more clarity about what would, what would satisfy the special use review.
I know.
It's too, in a way, the, this type of, the investment in this type of building to get to the point of a special use permit is really big. So the, the more, the more specific requirements we put in, the, the less likely is to happen. And, and it's just, the, the invest, it's really hard to invest that money and then with, with an expectation you may fail. So I don't, well, I don't think necessarily the process of doing it as a special use permit is inappropriate, but I, but I think Dustin is right, we need to put as many things, qualitative things we're looking for as possible, I mean, to...
You mean to guide the person?
To guide the, to guide the applicant to, to submit the appropriate documents.
So what you're saying is, it could work, but it needs to be very carefully focused and with expectation.
Yeah, and may, I mean, maybe it's, it's akin to what the PUD process is kind of supposed to be with a preliminary PUD and then a final PUD, where, where maybe the beginning submission is, is a little looser and more conceptual, and then if it, you know, we could comment on that and kind of get, get it down to something more tangible and finite to review.
So, so the, the kinds of issues, I mean, because we're here, we have to deal with this, I guess, that, that might be relevant, or something like bulk setback from street edge. And I'm saying street edge instead of property line, because actually looking in detail at the redo of Lincoln Avenue, they did not move the sidewalk at Main and Lincoln away from the curb like they did at The Gather. And, and they've just redone this. I think it's a new sidewalk. And so if that's because the property line is only four feet in from the curb, and that's why the sidewalk stayed where it did, then this, this would be an example of the kind of thing that would matter to me is, okay, you do not get to build this massive full-bulk 10-story building 10 feet in, which is only 14 feet from the curb of Lincoln Avenue. If we're talking about walkability, you know, that's going to be a scary place to be walking. It's hard enough to be walking right up on the curb on a place like Lincoln Avenue without a 10-story building 10 feet away from you. Full length of this, full length of the block as we will require, because we want, you know, everything's got to be walkable, so we make it as non-walkable as possible. In any case, these are the kinds of things I'm concerned about. And I'm not willing to vote for a 120 without some kind of way of coping with these issues. And I think another way to make this relevant is that if we, if it is a special use, then we're also acknowledging that we don't know what the future of this district is really going to be, because it may not happen. That is, if the university actually enrollment decreases, or the university maintains its enrollment for financial reasons by going much, much more online or with adult students, that is, if you, for, for people who don't think this way, 25 years ago, the university stated in its strategic plan that it wanted to increase enrollment of international students and out-of-state students for financial reasons to increase revenue. That was made public, the state legislature went berserk, that plan was removed and implemented in spades. That is, that's where we are. That is likely to be going away for demographic reasons in Asia, as well as in the U.S. And this notion that we've got to build the sidewalks and build 10-story buildings in this district is actually going to develop this way, I think is a little optimistic. I think that one of the ways to think of mixed use, and this again, maybe what Ms. Sims is thinking, is to imagine that this neighborhood is going to be a mix of different buildings, different uses, very small amounts of commercial. The commercial may be on Harvey, which is actually where it's probably in demand, because that would be closest to the University lunch trade, which is the opportunity on North Campus. And so, in any case, that's sort of where I'm at.
Well, leaving, leaving off the height limit issue, when we look at the purpose statement as it's written, and there's, we've, we've kind of come to this, there seems to be this story that's being told that it's an area that's going to be developed as student housing development, which is, to be clear, not anything that's referenced anywhere in the ordinance, and it's not something that's described in the purpose statement. The purpose statement describes something that I think is more like what Ms. Sims is talking about as, you know, what might be a possible future aside from student development. So I don't think that, you know, the way the ordinance is written, it's not addressing and it's not, you know, it doesn't have the potential to produce that kind of future development. We've just, in our discussion, introduced the idea that the market as it is today, you know, is likely to produce a certain thing. But I don't know, other than the 12-foot height, the 12-foot ceiling requirement on the first floor and the height limit debate, I don't know that there's a whole lot that is in the ordinance that wouldn't allow for other types of development, whether it's a vertical mixing or horizontal mixing, which is what you're, I think you're describing. I think those are all things that could, that could happen. It really just depends on the market. And then, you know, other than the city providing incentives, which is something different that we can't really get into and address through the, you know, changes to the zoning ordinance tonight.
I, I hear you. I have no doubt that this developer would not be building a 10-story full-lot building. And I think it's even stated that it's a student housing development corporation. So part of what I'm thinking is that by... So part of what I'm thinking is that by not having, at least not having by right, but maybe not having at all, the opportunity to go to one-hundred-and-twenty stories, we prevent the illusion that this is a place for more student-oriented housing that sort of displaces whatever else can survive there and make it a more interesting, multi-height, multi-building size, multi-age neighborhood. So I think keeping the height limit down is more consistent with the intent statement than putting it up.
Right, and I'll, before I, I'll pass it to you. I think that's something that I brought up last week, you know, just in looking around at the surrounding context and the height limit of other zoning districts that touch this or, or abut it. And nothing exceeds, I think, you know, the, well, some of these are controlled by FAR, but we talked about what the likely outcome with that, with an FAR like that would be and it would be, you know, a seven, eight-story building. So I'm kind of leading, leaning in that direction too, thinking that contextually, what makes more sense is something around seventy-five, eighty-five feet as opposed to the one-hundred-and-twenty foot that's been proposed. Miss you?
So the reason that we see most of the buildings are seventy-five to eighty-five, there's an economic reason of, that's the most economic way of building it. And we might get scared when we're thinking, oh, my God, it's going to be a ten-story building. But maybe it's not. It's just something that we got so used to look at. Anything bigger or higher than that could invoke fear. And is it rational?
I don't know if it's fear, but I think there is an impact, right, in terms of the, the bulk or the massing of a building that is that large on the pedestrian environment. And so we have to think about that and whether or not, we don't have that much, you know, in terms of form standards here, other than the setbacks that would alleviate that impression. So I think if we want to consider that, like Ms. Hopkins has said, then we need to think about building in some other form standards that would address the impression of, of a building of that size of people on the street. Ms. Sims?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't, for me, it's not a question of fear or even a hundred percent aesthetics. It's just density, you know? I, I just, when I think about, yeah, when you build to that degree, first of all, you have occupants and issues, you have utilization issues, you have density issues, and also it makes the demographics much more homogenious. So I have to just say, as a fifty-something-year-old person who lives in this community, knowing other fifty-something old people who live in the community, I don't want to be around, I'm not moving into a building with college students. That would never be something that I would ever want to do, nor do I necessarily, lots of folks in my age group were not interested in being homeowners because we've done that. So when I, again, I'm sort of having this sort of myopic view, which I get a chance to have at this stage of my life, about what, what my other contemporaries want. And it is a much more varied community. So I like having access to everything that I can get in a city. It's, right, I like, again, like I said, gyms, Pilates, all of the things that I want and I want to be able to get to it easily. And I don't mind college students. I just don't want to be in a building because it changes the culture and climate of my neighborhood when there's a whole bunch of them. So, not in a bad way. It's just, you're right, I'm not being, but I just think about, in a, if, if we want to think about it not as a college sort of dorm kind of thing and we wanted to think about it being a community, that would be much more pluralistic. And so, again, the bigger you get, the more you've got to fill it. So I'm just thinking more, again, I think for me, it's a density issue.
So let's talk about that density issue. Let's say this proposed development, they want to put several stories of parking in it that will bump up their height. To do vertical parking, that's great. They solve quite a few issues there. And also, I respect you that you want a place to be, a place that you feel like you want to live, but we are talking about a very small strip, relatively. I don't know how many square foot it is with respect to how big our community is. We are talking about this piece of land. We can't really expect every single piece of land to adapt the same vision.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Completely agree, but we're talking about a piece of land that connects to downtown Urbana, right? So if we think about urban development, right, we want to think about those spaces of land that have some connectivity, right? So it's different than sort of being out further, right, when we think about, so, I completely agree with you and we're not talking, for me, I'm not thinking about just this piece that we're thinking about regarding development. I'm thinking about the whole section. So I'm completely open, but here, I just wanted to clarify, not fear-based and just trying to think about what connects, what, because it's a great area that connects to downtown and what do we do to help make that a continuum, continuous feel?
So that will be something, is it more likely that we should do something with respect to, let me think, east part of Lincoln to make that connection more organic?
So the east side of Lincoln here is an historic district.
Yeah, I know. So talking about making a, like, connection, the things
So, so one example would be controlling building heights so that the building, in bulk, so that the buildings one-hundred-and-fifty feet across the street don't dominate shade, light. The buildings in the historic district. I mean, we dealt with this with the Gather and in the Gather case, the buildings on the south of, what is it, Clark Street? Are lower, they're down, and they are stepped down in the back, I mean, to the south for precisely this reason. And I don't know what the diversity of views is, but I think that came out okay. I doubt that the people on Main Street are superbly happy and welcoming it, but I see you. Yes. Right, but, yeah. But we worked at that and we worked at it, I mean, I thought it was a PUD, but we worked at it because it was a special use. And I, you know, I could go back and find the recording, but I remember the discussions were not, you know, there were open deliberations, significant concerns, specific collaborative adjustments made over, you know, so, so I can imagine that working if we want to try that. But there would be work to be done to do it well. And I'm talking about work on an ordinance to do it well, not just work once we have the ordinance.
But I think that, that development that's south of Clark Street, that, the zoning is different, right?
Yeah, that, that one was by right, the, the one on the south side of Clark Street. That's, I think, R4 zoning and, and they did a by-right development there. But they did, they did not include that in their, you know, in, in their larger, you know, they didn't need zoning permission for that, but that was by design. They, they chose not to include that in their larger ask because we asked them to step it down because we knew that that would be something that would, you know, ease the transition with the neighborhood.
Right, but my point is that we have this, we have, to some extent, a pattern built in with the zoning that provides for these transitions to a certain extent. And we're, we're altering that pattern potentially with this. And so are we creating discontinuities where we're, we're removing, you know, that, that buffer, that transition from, you know, some parts of Lincoln, what are two-story homes or two-story, three-story apartment buildings to something else currently? It seems like you could potentially build by right something that would be like a six, seven-story building, six build, what's the one on, the fairly new one? That's five-story, six-story?
Oh, the, you're talking in the B3U, the nine oh one western? Yeah, that one was a, that was, I'd, I'd call that sort of an exception that proved that our zoning ordinance wasn't great, isn't great for that area because they, they had to assemble a lot of land and they had to do underground parking and they just, that's why it's kind of funky shaped. Because they had to acquire enough land to sort of get the parking in there.
I'm talking more about the, the resulting bulk and height to the building, which is kind of what the current zoning entitlements allow. You could do something like that.
Currently?
Well, it'd be hard to fit the parking. Yeah, I get that part.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the parking really makes it. Well, one thing that our current regulations do not do well is allow you to redevelop smaller sites. There was one proposal that came across my desk probably a year and a half ago for a smaller site. And if they were to fit all of the parking on the site, they could have built, I think, this is all theoretical, not economically feasible, but by right, they could have done it if they built five floors of parking with seven stories of apartments on top of it because that's, and they weren't even maxing out quite their, their FAR and, and the other regulations at the time. So it's, yeah, and they would have gotten a bonus to floor area ratio for putting their parking in a structure.
Right, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that we should leave the current rules in place. I'm trying to think through, you know, just on one side of Lincoln, we have, for the most part, three-story buildings. It gets a little bit different when you get towards university, but, and we're talking about transitioning to, you know, five, six-story buildings, which seems reasonable to me and that's kind of where I was at last week. But when we start thinking about a transition to a ten, eleven-story building, that's, I think, where it's a little bit harder to, to understand how that would work.
I think we just, in a way, maybe we have our answer, right? At the Gather, we had a special use permit and part of that process was they presented a design to the committee and we had a lot of comments on that design and they changed the bulk of the way they organized their building as a result of that meeting. So that kind of proved that that is a special use process achieved the goal that we have. So perhaps the answer is that we can allow a, an eighty-five-foot building by right and anything higher than that comes in as a special use. So we have an opportunity to, to review the proposal. And I would further propose that perhaps another constraint requirement for, for building taller is maybe we, we also throw that into the design review board. It's a little bit different purview of what the design review board does now, but it's another set of community eyes on a project that has a big impact.
Well, I'll, I'll throw out, I think you have an easier answer and it's already in this proposal. On page eight of your memo, the table of uses, we're proposing adding in residential planned unit development. Commercial and mixed-use planned unit developments are already allowed in the district. So if somebody wanted to go above whatever height max you set, I mean, they, they could apply for a planned unit development. I don't know if anybody is going to have the stomach to do that, but that would be an option.
What is the minimum size for a PUD?
It's half an acre.
Is it possible to assemble a half acre to do a development in that area?
Anything is possible with enough money.
What's a block? How big is a regular block in that?
In, in that area, I'd have to look. So it's, so I know it's, it's twenty-eight and a half acres for the whole area we're looking at and it's nine and a half blocks, so, I mean, you're
Two and a half acres.
Yeah, you get, yeah. You get half a block and you probably have what you need.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The, the, the PUD process at the moment is more burdensome than the special use process. The PUD process has a minimum acreage requirement.
It does, yeah.
Half an acre is two hundred by, wait. When I used to have this stuff in my head.
Twenty-one thousand fifty square feet roughly, right? Whatever the, so.
Yeah.
So it's twenty thousand square feet is a half acre, I mean, twenty-two thousand or whatever. So that's two hundred by a hundred?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the best example might be the, that old ZTA fraternity house at fourteen oh four South Lincoln, just south of Farmhouse.
Yeah.
That, they did a PUD because they just met the minimum requirement and that, that site doesn't look terribly large.
I, I would say it's kind of a typical residential lot in our community is sixty-six by one thirty-two and it's three of those.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, it's two hundred by a hundred. Yeah, I, I mean, you know, we're, to my mind, we're sort of where we were last week. We've come up with what I think is a potentially good solution, but can we really, in real time, in a meeting, figure out, should it be a PUD? Should it be a special use? If it's going to be a special use, what are the criteria? If it's going to be a PUD, does that work? I mean, it's only eight o'clock, so, you know, we, we've got two hours. But this is not the usual This is not the usual forum for doing that kind of work. So I, I mean, it seems bizarre to do this, but I'm inclined to suggest that we investigate, meaning staff as well as the rest of us have time to congeate.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Can I ask for some clarification? So special use permit, in the name, it's use. I've always understood special use permits as providing relief from use restrictions. When we talk about the Gather, I think what they were getting relief from had to do with use, the combination of residential and long-term stay hotel or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. And the, the whole reason we set a height limit was, we were able to do that because it was a special use, but it was the use itself that was, that was the thing. So, yeah, so where's the use here?
I don't think that a special use permit is the right tool to try and address this problem.
That's exactly the kind of thing I was worried about. We, you know, we have to think about what this and that before we sort of assume it's going to work.
Yeah, I got to agree with Dustin because really in a special use, you, you don't consider the physical design of the building, right? You're not supposed to. It's like a zoning change, right?
Right, but it, it comes into play because there's discretion involved, but the discretion has to be initiated, triggered because of a use change.
Yes, a request for a use, relief from the use restrictions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean
Put this back to PUD. Put this back to PUD. There's a simpler solution in my mind, and that is a motion to set the height limit at 85 feet. That may not be the right solution in the long run if we want to all set up a PUD option.
Right.
And I'm not willing to do more than that tonight without figuring out a way to deal with anything higher.
Yeah, a motion that does that plus these other proposed changes.
Correct.
Right.
In other words...
Yeah.
And the, and the PUD option is, is built in here, so that is part of the, the proposed changes would allow residential PUDs, which currently is not allowed. Mixed use is already in there. So if you look at your memo, you might be confused and say, why are we only adding residential PUDs? But mixed use and commercial PUDs are already in there.
Meaning they are in the B3U?
Correct, and they'd be...
Have not been modified.
Correct, yeah, they'd be carried over.
Excellent. So, for the PUD, there's a minimum acreage requirement. We've got that.
Correct.
What else about a PUD?
That's about it. And there's, there's no other threshold.
So, we want to encourage smaller scale development in the place, which, a smaller scale because they got relief from the parking requirement, they might not, even though when they are not able to meet the PUD size requirement, they have a parking relief, they have the 85, it should be sufficient to accomplish what we want it to do. And for certain cases, if they really want to go bigger, they have the land, they can, they have the built-in process of they might have to go through a PUD. So I don't think a PUD would be too burdensome for people who really want to build 10-story building, PUD is probably just fine.
I, I agree now. So, I can imagine a motion now. I'm not quite ready to make one, but I'm, I'm working on it. And I think Ms. Yu, as, and maybe you want to make a motion, is sort of framed it. The thing I'm a little unclear on is what discretion we have within a PUD about building height, building bulk. What, what, what? I mean, we figured out why a special use permit isn't going to work. Let's spend at least 90 more seconds thinking about whether a PUD is going to work.
Well, I mean, so with the PUD, somebody can ask for essentially whatever relief from the zoning ordinance or whatever deviation from the zoning ordinance they want. Typically, we ask, we ask for more if somebody's asking for more. So we, we being the city will ask for more if somebody's asking for more. If all somebody's asking for is, say, an extra story on the building, then we wouldn't ask for a whole lot, you know, in, in return, right? But, yeah, that's where it gets kind of squishy, though, is that where's, you know, how do you, how do you balance all that?
Also, in the, in the PUD text in the zoning ordinance are, are suggestions from the city of, here's, here's our request that you include, this will help you in your PUD if you offer these things, and perhaps we add a few more things to that for, for these kind of buildings.
Right, but we don't need to do that.
No, no, that's a, that's a different, that's a different text amendment.
Yeah, yeah, but, and because I have a hunch you and I are thinking of the same case, you have now reminded me of the details of sort of how this can and cannot work. So, I'm comfortable. I mean, if Ms. Yu wants to make the motion, I'll figure it out if, if so.
I move that we accept the recommendations, updated text from our planning staff with the change of height limit to 85 instead of 75.
Do we have a motion from Ms. Yu? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopkins. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd like one small bit of discussion. I would, I would like to add one piece of text to say 85 feet to the roof surface, to a clarification of what this 85 feet is, not parapet height, roof surface. It matters.
Well, I mean, we don't, we don't have that anywhere else in, in the zoning ordinance. You know, we don't call that, we don't call out building height anywhere else. I mean, we describe how to calculate building height.
Yeah, and doesn't that definition describe it?
Yeah, yeah.
If we're comfortable with the other definitions, okay.
Any other discussion on the proposal? On the motion?
Could I get clarification? Ms. Yu, when you said the staff recommendations, was that including this new bit about that the entrance shall be facing the street from which the building is addressed, or are we going to scrap that per Mr. Hopkins' suggestion?
Up to you. You make the motion.
Let's include that.
Okay. Yeah. And still holds, but my point was that it's so easy to change which address face that I don't think it's a constraint, so I'm not worried about it.
Any other discussion on the motion? Ready to vote? All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Fell?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins? Themms?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
You're all red.
Yes. Okay, that motion passes.
It'll go to the committee of the whole on August 5th.
Okay, August 5th to council. All right, old business, we have none, new public hearings, we have none, new business, we have none, audience participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the plan commission for five minutes uninterrupted on a topic of your choice? If so, please come forward and sign in. No takers? All right, staff report.
Yeah, just, I'm sure you all saw that we sent out a draft of the, of the comprehensive plan for you all. You all should have received instructions for that. I think they're pretty clear, but if you have issues, please contact me. So we, I'm looking forward to the study session on August 22nd. Regarding the maps, we're going to get those out to you as soon as possible. I ran into some technical difficulties, which happens when you delete your data inadvertently and have to rebuild it from scratch, but that's forthcoming very soon, so. But yes, it's the staff report.
Any questions for staff about the comp plan access, comments, timeframe?
Just a small question that was linked to Lou. It does seem like having a process, I just think about how seriously we just took this process, having some opportunities to have additional discussions before there's like more public, I don't know, just seems like it would be nice to have had some, like an additional step. I just know it's such a big document with so many components, and it just feels like we're going to just do a drive-by and miss the details. And I know we'll have an opportunity to provide feedback, but then we won't be aware of each other's feedback, and there's just something that happens in group process where collaborative discussions can deepen or clarify things. So I don't know, I know you guys were going to go and think about it in another step, but I just, what I personally would appreciate, just more opportunities for dialogue.
Yeah, and that's, so, that's, it's kind of a tough thing to, you know, there's, there's benefits and drawbacks to doing it one way or the other. We wanted to get it in everybody's hands, so you actually had time to review it before we did the first study session. And, you know, now I'm hearing from a couple of you that maybe we, you know, maybe we should have just started off, you know, and done that sooner. So I understand that. But we will, once we get into the study sessions, we, you know, we have our tentative timeline, but that's not set in stone. So we will be doing study sessions with you all, and we'll do as many of those as we need before we actually go into the official, this is a case, we're having public hearings now. So there will be opportunities for that dialogue there. Yeah, at this point right now, it's essentially, you're going to have sort of one-on-one dialogue with me while you're, you know, while you're submitting comments, and I'm happy to chat with anybody at any time about, you know, about the plan. So that's sort of the process as we have it.
So, I'm trying to think what, what to say here and what to say elsewhere. We are not allowed to share this plan, am I correct?
Correct, yeah, not until it actually becomes public. So at the, I believe at the first study session, that's when we'll, we'll be making it open to the public.
For what reason is that the case? What, if I did an FYI, what would be your answer?
What would be, oh, FOIA?
FOIA, sorry. Hey, I'm not too good with three-letter acronyms, especially when they're actually five letters.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure that you, yeah, I'm not sure that that would get you any answer other than just asking. Sorry, what was the question again? What's...
I see no reason for it to be secret. The idea that we have a draft of a public plan that's been underway for four years and it's secret strikes me as bizarre.
Well, I mean, we want to get the plan commissions weigh in before, you know, before we release and say, you know, this, this draft is sort of our, this is our staff draft. It's not, but the plan commission is the body that prepares this and submits it to the city council. So, I mean, if you all are okay with us releasing it to the public, I can, we can have the staff conversations about that, and then we'll make a decision on that.
I, I think a better way to think about it is I think we need to have a deliberation about process. Now, one of the things that was great about tonight, which I was going to comment on in closing, is there's a, there's a kind of deliberation and collaboration and a good kind of group think, which is non-group think, and we all did that tonight and I think came to a good outcome. And that's what has not happened at any stage of this plan yet. And what I see is the prescribed process is continuing to make that impossible. And I don't know what rule or what decision-maker is dealing with the process. And I don't think, you know, again, it's, can we do it in real time? And I think not. But I think we need to have a discussion about the whole process. That might be item one on the study session.
Well, I think we can do what we want with the time in the, in the study session, so we can certainly talk about that.
I agree we can do what we want, but there's a set of expectations going on.
Right.
That spending two hours talking about that on the 22nd would not be consistent with. And that's why I think we need to at least...
Yeah, can we build that into the agenda for the 22nd?
I have made notes, and I believe we can build that in.
Okay. I haven't, I know that in the email, it mentioned that something was presented to council. I haven't had a chance to look at what that was. Can you, do you, can you summarize that timeline for us real quick? Or is it not?
I mean, there, there was a lot there, but essentially, plan commission study session at the end of August on the, on the 22nd. We had it at plan commission for, I think, four, three or four meetings after that. And then, you know, then it would need to go on to, to committee of the whole and then to council. I don't have the dates off the top of my head for all that.
But those three or four meetings after the 22nd are meant to be public hearings?
No, I mean, they could be, so we deliberately didn't name them study sessions or public hearings because that's, once we get into that study session process, then it'll kind of all shake out from there, and we'll, we'll see where, where things take us.
Okay.
The schedule is part of the council packet, so you can see it online.
Yes.
And it, it is, it has council action by the first meeting of the council in December, which means committee of hall in November, which means public hearings by the commission by early November or late October, which means if there are four study sessions, they are, every single meeting is currently scheduled of this body between now and November.
Yeah, well, it sounds like something that we'll need to work out in the meeting on the 22nd then at the start. Anything else? All right, I closed my agenda, but I think the other thing that was on there was that we are adjourned.
Well, there's, there's study session, but there is no study session.
Yeah, there's no study session. Okay, so we are adjourned, 8:30. Thanks, everyone. Good discussion.
Thank you.